Sam, I think you can fire.
Sam, the recording has started for you. If you'd like to start the meeting, thank you.
Sean, I can't.
It's ridiculous.
As a reminder to the public, please mute yourself or staff will need to mute you during the course of the meeting. You need to be muted when it's the opportunity for the public to speak, then you can unmute yourself. Thank you. Are you having a technical issue, Chair Harden? Sorry, it appears that the Chair may be having technical issues. He's probably logging off and logging back on. Thank you.
Sean, I can, I can just barely hear you.
Let me increase my volume. Can you hear me better now? Or is it?
We can hear you fine. I think might be Sam's speaker.
What about now? I changed my headset location. Is that better? So Sam, if you're having problems, you may want to use the phone number that we provided. I believe there's also a phone number you can call if necessary. And you could just mute your vote, your. As the Commission is aware, this is the last solely virtual meeting. We will have physical meetings starting beginning of March.
Sam, I think you are muted.
I can hear a little bit now.
Oh.
I can hear Michael just very quietly. Can anyone hear? Can you hear me, Sean?
Yes, I can hear you fine. Yes.
Yeah.
Hear you fine.
We hear you fine. Yes.
Can you hear me, Sam? Sam, can you hear me?
I get to speakers.
You have to turn, turn up your volume.
I can see, but I've.
Turn up your volume of the speaker.
The public, sorry for the technical issues. This is just part of this virtual meeting process, which will be partially ending at the end of this month.
Do we have a way of texting Sam because he can't hear us when we suggest he call in or unmute his speaker?
He's muted now.
Let me go to his phone. Let me try to call him one second. I will call him right. I'm calling Chair Harding right now.
Hi, this is Sam.
Hey, Sam, this is Sean.
Yeah.
You're muted.
Yeah, I, 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 I do not, do not see that I'm muted on the screen. I see it unmuted.
Yeah, now we are fine. Yeah, we can hear you fine now.
Can you hear us, Sam?
But let's, is everyone else on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sean, are you there now?
I am here. Yes, we do have a quorum. If you, if you'd like to initiate the meeting, we are recording.
The problem is with his speaker, I think he can't hear us.
If you're having technical issues, Sam, if you'd like, you can also allow Vice Chair Ma to begin the meeting. And once you resolve your technical issues, you can rejoin as Chair. Is that fine?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can't hear us.
Vice Chair Ma, if the, if you would like, I mean, would you like to continue to wait? Or would you like to maybe begin the meeting and we can try to get this resolved? Would you like us to try to work with this?
When you call him, can, can you ask him to just go by the phone? See if he can just go by the phone without going through the Zoom.
I could do that again. One second. It's not picking up this time. No idea.
Hey, I, can you hear me, Sean?
Yes. Sean, you can hear me.
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Okay, final. Okay, good.
Have we started? Did you start, Michael, without me with?
No, no, we are waiting for you. That's, that's.
All right, let's, let me belatedly call the meeting to order. The meeting of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three Design Review Commission. Could we first establish a quorum? Michael.
Here.
And I don't see anyone else up on the screen. I see a Chris Holland, but I don't see the other members.
I can also call Roll if you'd like for you.
Please.
So Michael Ma stated, Commissioner Stuart Klein.
You are muted.
You're muted.
Present.
Commissioner Blockus.
Here.
Commissioner Chepe Mantika.
Here, present.
And Chair Harden.
Here.
Great, thank you.
Let's start. Public comments not, items not on the agenda. Members of the audience may bring to the Commission's attention any item that is not on the agenda. Please complete a request to speak or acknowledge to Sean. Speakers are generally given two to three minutes at the discretion of the Chair. Please be advised that by law, the Commission is unable to discuss or take action on issues presented before or during the public comments period. According to the Brown Act, items must first be noticed on the agenda before any discussion or action. First item on the agenda is the, on the consent calendar are the minutes of the January fourth and the February first meetings will take them separately.
Chair Harding, if we can see if there's any member of the public who like to speak about an item not on the agenda.
All right.
If there are any members of the public who like to speak about an item that is not on the agenda, as Chair Harding advised, we cannot discuss the item, but you can provide statements or comments. If there's anybody who would like to speak, please raise your hand. And if you can't raise your hand, please unmute yourself to talk about an item that is not on the current agenda. Chair Harding, no one has raised their hand and no one has unmuted themselves. So it appears we do not have anybody who'd like to speak about an item not on the agenda.
Hi, I'm sorry. My name is Chris Holland. I live next door at twelve fifty-six Biawerta. And.
As advised in our statements, both of ours, it's only for, for items that are not on the agenda. So if you wanted to talk about something that was pertinent to the DRC, that was not an itemized agenda item, you'll have an opportunity to speak when your item comes up. Sorry for the confusion.
Is that, do you understand that, Chris?
I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of the agenda in front of me.
Okay, but it, if, are you speaking on something that you are concerned about or interested in on the agenda?
Twelve forty-eight of Via Werthe will be the sixth item on the agenda. So we will need to go through the two consent items and then you'll be, I believe, I'm sorry to say, the last item on the agenda. We'll make sure to notify you when that occurs, of course.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. All right.
Can anyone hear me there?
I, I can, but I don't know who it is.
I am Suzanne Holland. I am taking part in this meeting by phone. Chris Holland, who you just talked to is my son. So we're both interested in the same property. My problem is I, I, my microphones on my computer are not working, but I have both the computer on and the phone on, so.
Thank you. Thank you. But we'll, we'll get to that when we get to that item on the agenda. It's the sixth item on the agenda. And we're going, we're going to now continue with, continue with our two minutes for prior meetings.
And Chair Harding, so just so you're aware, I have noted Suzanne Holland's name. We'll make sure to call her for the sixth item.
Okay, thank you. Again, I can't, I can only see you and Chris Holland are the only people I can see on my screen. All right, do we have a motion for the January fourth minutes? Discussion and emotion, if any.
I move to adopt, to approve.
Is there a second?
Right.
Okay, Chepe. All right, Sean, will you take the, the vote, please?
Sure. Stuart Klein.
Hi.
Chepe Mantika. Commissioner Blockus.
Yeah, I abstain. I was not present at the meeting, so I can't vote on it.
And Chair, Vice Chair Ma.
Abstain. I was not there.
And Chair Harding.
I.
The, the motion passes.
All right, the second, someone make a motion for the February first either comments. I. Someone's got an echo on.
Yeah, I think it's Mr. Basser.
Yeah. Could you turn off, Mr. Basser, could you turn off your audio? We're not, we're not ready for you yet.
Okay.
We're not ready for you yet. We're still, we're still doing approving the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of February first?
Motion approve the minutes, February first.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. I second.
Sean, would you call the roll? You're, you're muted, Sean.
Mess today. Commissioner Klein.
You muted.
I see Commissioner Klein voted that way.
A lot of muting. I.
Commissioner Mantika.
I abstain. I was not present.
Commissioner Blockus.
Hi.
Vice Chair Ma.
Hi.
And Chair Harding.
I.
The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Let's move to item number three. SC twenty-two dash zero zero twenty-nine, five seven nine zero, Abaridum for presentation of staff.
Yes, good evening, Chair Harding and Commissioners. This is Jali, our social planner. This evening, I'm going to present a design review application, SC twenty-two dash zero zero twenty-nine for the construction of a residential addition and deck expansion to existing two-story hillside home at fifty-seven ninety Abaridum Drive. The subject property is located in the southwest autos on Abaridum Drive between Highway two eighty and the Foothill Expressway as marked on this vicinity map. And on this slide, it provides the proposed site plan. But before presenting the details, it should be mentioned that this neighborhood known as Woolland Acres was originally developed within the jurisdiction of Santa Clara County, but annexed to the city in two thousand and six. As it was developed, subject to the county standards, the structure currently is not consistent with the city's development standards, and it's considered as a non-conforming structure. Think the, excuse me, the inconsistencies are the side setbacks. Existing house has a fifteen-foot side setbacks for both first and second floor, but the city requires twenty-foot side setbacks for the first story and twenty-five-foot second story setback in this R one dash twenty underlying zoning district. Back to the site plan, the project scope consists of one hundred and ninety square foot first story addition and eight square foot second story addition as shown in the blue color. The project also indicates deck expansion at the first door. Sorry, the, the project also includes a deck expansion at the first floor and the new deck at the second floor. The house has existing deck that is marked in green that will be repaired as part of the project. Next to the green where is marked in gray, it is the proposed first story deck expansion. The deck expansion will use existing house side setback of the first story, which is allowed administratively per the non-conforming provision, the non-conform extension provision in the zoning code. The second floor deck will be placed on top of the first story addition area. The proposed deck is highlighted in red by staff. However, it is found that the deck currently is not compliant with the second floor side setback. There's no privacy concerns found by staff that staff will present next. In order to move the project, staff added condition number three in this agenda report that the applicant shall revise the deck in the construction joint to get at least twenty-five feet from the property line that will make the deck area reduce in this now yellow area. In addition to the deck setback, the proposal is found consistent with all the other R one dash twenty zoning standards and also all existing trees and ever green screening vegetation will be retained outside during construction. This is the proposed first floor plan. The new addition in the blue color will be used for gene. And this is the second floor plan. And the second floor addition, if you can see where my mouse is at, is this triangle corner, which will be aligned with the first floor wall. The second deck area next to it will be revised accordingly for the setback requirement and the condition. This is the front elevation plan, which will remain the same. This is the rear elevation plan. The second floor deck, of course, will need to be adjusted to meet the setback requirement. There are also other modifications to the rear elevation at the second floor, including window and door adjustments and a new outdoor staircase to the proposed deck areas. Staff has no concerns with the changes facing the rear side as there's no privacy impact to the rear abutting neighbor at twenty-one hundred Ruth Lane. And I will explain further on this slide. As staff added the aerial map and three D view map on this slide, you can see that the back property only has, has a few structures, structures in the front and the subject site that face the rear area of the neighboring property, they are owning very dense trees and there's no active areas for this rear neighbors. So there should have no privacy impacts to the rear. For the side elevations, except for the proposed addition and decks, there, there are no other modifications. All the second windows will remain the same. As highlighted in the blue boxes, the applicant is proposing solid wood screening at a height of five feet and six inches to address privacy invasion. Per section five point three of the residential design guidelines, second floor stacks oriented towards the side properties should use appropriate screening measures like solid railing, which exactly the applicant is proposing. So staff has no privacy concerns to, fun to the side neighbors as a result of adding those solid walls. But as one of the conditions, the homeowner shall maintain the solid rating for the life of the project. Additionally, staff wants to add some contacts of the site. As you can find in the vicinity map, the neighboring properties to the left and right also have extensive deck areas when constructed in the unincorporated county. It is likely because of the limited rear yard for those properties due to the steep slope in the hillside. And there are some more pictures showing the rear yard conditions that appear to be not active and usable yard space for the homeowner. This is the materials board. In general, the materials that will apply to the project will match the existing house materials. The deck and railing screening will be wood with steel posts. For the community engagement, the applicant reached out to the right and left side neighbor and obtained the support ladder that's attached in the attachment C and also put at the right side of the slide. The applicant also posted the signage board per the city's posting policy. With all the information presented, staff recommends the Design Review Commission approved design review application, SC twenty-two dash zero zero twenty-nine, subject to the listed findings. Staff now concludes the presentation and will then happy to answer any questions. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Jai. Commissioners, questions for Jai?
Yeah, I just have one.
Stuart, uh huh.
Oh, okay. I thought it was a very clear presentation, but I did have one question about the rear neighbor, that long, narrow, seven acre lot. Is, is that something that could potentially be subdivided and, and built on? I know it's very long and narrow, but what, what's the zoning status of that and the subdivide status?
I believe it's the, sorry, let me check on the zoning. But in terms of the development potentials, I believe that site has will, will need to go through some environmental studies before development due to the, the vegetation and potential have the, the potential, I think, screen on site. We did receive some preliminary applications in the past on that parcel, but none of them have been moving forward for entitlement application. And I'm going to check the zoning on that parcel.
Thank you.
Okay, David, did you have a question?
Yeah. In regards to the screening wall of five foot six, how, is that something in our guidelines that stipulates the, the height? Or is that something that the applicant chose as the height?
It is the applicant's choice to, to the, the solid wall at, at the height of five feet and six inches. I don't think the design guidelines has mentioned that.
Okay, and then in the conditions where we talk about maintaining that. So condition number four talks about maintaining that for the life. Should that include the actual height that we approve at this point in time in that condition?
That is the intent. And if Commissioner Blockus, you think we should be more specific, you can modify that condition to, to be maintained the same height.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Michael?
Actually, I, I, yeah, I actually have a question for you. On these A one point zero one, the proposed site plan is show there are two trees shown nearby the new deck, number one and number two. And I know your reports say there's no impact. Has any, you know, first, you know what kind of tree are the, you know, those are? And the second, do the applicant or the architect submit anything or has the staff looked into that impact? I know you said there's no impact, but any, any detail or more information about that?
So I don't have the details of what the two tree species are, but since the proposal.
They are oak trees. Yeah, I think one, at least one of them, I recall it was an oak and it was not a huge one. It was, you know, maybe a foot and a half and so come.
Okay.
And also, as the proposal is not within, like, one, sorry, two thirds of the drip line. So we didn't require the average report, but I did have the condition in the staff report requires the protection fence.
Got it, got it.
Around the tree number one, number two.
All right. Also, Commissioner Harding, if I could.
Yes.
I had a discussion with the applicant when I got there. He let me into the house and took me from the inside so I can see views from the inside of the property, what the sight lines and all that were, but I wanted to make sure that was on record that I did actually speak with the applicant.
Okay. Chepe, any comments, questions?
I had a similar comment to, to Michael Ma, but I think it was answered. So no, no further questions.
Okay. I also was, came into the house and spoke with the owner and answered the questions that I had. And so I have no further comments. Next, we'd like to hear from the architect or owners, owner on the project.
Hi, yes, my name is Camden Santo. I work for Square Three Architecture. Yeah, so Gia mentioned a lot of what I was going to discuss, but essentially the house was built under the county's jurisdiction before it was annexed into Los Altos, and so it's a non-conforming structure. House is located on a very steep lot. I think there's about thirty feet of elevation change in the rear yard. And the house was not designed to have very good access to any of that exterior space. So the whole intent of the project, adding the first floor addiction, addition and adding the second floor roof deck and first floor lower deck extension is to establish a better connection to the site and provide the, the family with more usable exterior space. The one item I did want to discuss and bring up is the, the need to, the condition of approval to for the second floor roof deck to be brought into compliance when the, with the twenty-five foot second floor side yard setback. That would pretty much kill any sort of connection that the family would have from their, their family spaces, their kitchen, living room spaces out to the exterior. connection that the family would have from their uh their family spaces, their kitchen, living room spaces out to the exterior um of their yard. Um there's uh and because the house is currently non-conforming, um that that change would require basically the second floor roof deck to be completely eliminated. There's just not enough space up there for any usable um second floor outdoor space off of their family rooms. Um and our previous conversations with staff, it that item wasn't brought up until a week and a half ago as being an issue. Um and I believed we had resolved that issue and didn't realize until the staff report came out that that was being included as a condition of approval. Um and so that is the an item that we would like to discuss um as a potential issue. I mean, there's really no privacy concerns on the site. Um the project as relative designed relatively to um to be a as a modest addition to the existing house and the existing um restrictions that were placed on the house when it was built.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Camden.
If I can add to that.
Um yes.
So the rift deck as proposed, as originally proposed, uh would allow us to basically connect the family room inside to outside um one hundred percent. The the family room is uh basically going to have some uh glass doors and that'll allow us to go outside with with the uh with the uh change here, what would happen is that that roof deck would be maybe a third of the family room and it would be kind of like a three-legged horse. It it'd be really weird because you'd expect to be able to see the whole roof deck from the family room and walk out to the whole span of it. And with this proposal, with with basically having to observe the new um setbacks, we'd basically be uh about halfway into the family room and walk out and then basically see from the windows uh a roof deck on maybe a third of the family room. And then the rest of it is uh not. So maybe that's not the best way to describe it, but it it wouldn't be very aesthetically pleasing. It would, it would be weird.
Yeah, it also wouldn't be very usable. Um the the roof deck as it is is relatively modest. It's enough room for roughly a dining table that the family could use as an outdoor dining space. Um and having to cut back to that twenty five foot setback for the second floor, um which I don't believe that's in any of the design guidelines I read. I didn't see anything that requested that that second floor roof deck be located at that location. Um but whether it is or isn't the the proposed um remodel addition is as we see, it currently fits well with the existing structure of the property and helps the family get better connection to their their property, um because there currently really isn't one.
So what it sounds like is you're asking for a variance for that uh setback. Is that correct?
I guess so. Uh as of last week, uh I was under the impression that we weren't asking for anything. We didn't understand that this was going to be an issue. So as of uh last week, I uh jumped in and spoke to some of the folks at the uh city and I thought we had resolved this and now we're understanding that it's still an issue. Um what I thought we were going to do today was uh I don't I don't know terminology here. I thought we were gonna get an exception. But it sounds like
Very, a variance, yes.
Sir, sir Harding, if I if I could advance before the commissioner speak more about this item. So uh the Brown Act requires that uh any item for consideration needs to be publicly noticed. If the commission wants to discuss a potential variance, they could not at tonight's meeting. It would have to be rescheduled or continued, and then that item would have to be noticed properly to recognize that a variance is being considered by the commission. Um any discussion regarding the variance would not be compliant with the Brown Act, so just to be aware.
Sean, could I ask a question? Uh and you can tell me if I'm sort of skirting the Brown Act, but if Jai, if we could take a look at the one uh picture that you had, I think where it was yellow and it had uh the deck in yellow versus what it currently is or what it was proposed in the plans, I think. Okay, yeah. Okay, so yeah, this helps me as far as guiding my thoughts on how this is set up. Okay.
So do you have uh, David, do you have a question?
Uh well, I just wanted to see how it looked relative. So Jai, if if I understand it, the applicant as what they were thinking and maybe the applicant or the architect and you could tell us is the applicant thought it was the kind of pink portion going to the to the black line around.
Correct.
Uh and and it actually is with our condition there, just the yellow part. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, they that is correct. Um and if I can add further, I can share my screen if also that would be helpful, but the portion of that yellow box that is hanging over um to the top side, hanging over the addition below, um that is actually a staircase to provide access from the second floor outdoor usable space down to the lower floor usable space and eventually down to the yard. Um so the actual usable portion of that deck would be even smaller than what is being shown there in yellow.
Okay.
Yeah, I can I can share the elevations if that's helpful.
So the issue, guys, is this this lot is fairly narrow. Well, it's relatively narrow, right? So I think the setbacks were defined based because of that. Um if we were thinking to follow the exact uh old setback line, but unfortunately, because of square footage issues and and uh uh just uh space issues or, you know, restrictions, uh we kind of did it that way, and now we're basically having to cut that. I, you know, I'm about forty thousand dollars into this project. I know that doesn't uh mean anything to um to you guys in terms of the details. The details is there's a lot of engineering required and a lot of uh architectural work required. Uh I I'm about to throw this project out, folks, because it's it's one where it only makes sense as we drew it, and it was based on understanding that the setbacks were predefined before uh Los Altos. Um and we only heard about this issue last week, and I'm about to cancel this project.
All right, well, I can understand that. Um Sean, what um what do you see as options? Can we only just uh work with the existing uh project and make a decision on that? Is that our only option?
Well, I mean, the option is to is to continue with the meeting and have a discussion regarding all the items, potentially with the exception of that deck, and then i- if the applicant really wants that, then they would have to go through a variance process, which they would then need to just you would need to continue the item. Um at least you've had the discussion, take taken public comment on the item and uh discuss any of the other issues that may need to be resolved. And then continue the item for it to come back at a later date, and then we would properly uh notice the item so that you could discuss and make it take action on a potential variance. Right now, you wouldn't be able to have a discussion or take action. All you could do is continue it, at least related to this this balcony.
Okay.
Sean, can I ask another question?
Yep, go ahead.
Um Sean, maybe to be helpful to the applicant, uh and and maybe we can't do this. Um can you state the three reasons that a variance would be acceptable, or is that getting out of bounds and getting into Brown Act stuff?
No, it is it is not. Let me um
That might help them in what they want to do tonight.
Let me just pull up one second.
Thank you for that.
Sorry, one second. Let me zoom in a little bit on this once again, increase the size, because nobody can read this. Okay, so let me turn on the screen. Okay, so um in order to pursue a variance, um individuals that pursue it would need to submit a variance a letter to the city. Um they would need to need to meet particular findings, um and there are these uh three particular findings they would need to meet. Uh they would need to meet that the granting of the variance will be consistent with the objectives of the zoning standards. Um in effect, if the design review commission approves the variance um and the overall project does comply with the zoning standards, then uh this is a very simple, straightforward finding to achieve. Uh the applicant would not have an issue with that. Um that the granting of the variance would not be detrimental to health, safety, or welfare of persons living or working in the vicinity or injuries to the property or improvements. Uh this particular finding is resolved as long as typically these projects comply with the development standards and they are built consistent with the building code, they will not create issues of health detrimental issues to health, safety, or welfare. The the difficult item for most variances, which is why we see the commission approving very few or we present very few, is that the variance requires that the granting has to be based on special circumstances applicable to the applicable to the property, which includes the size, the shape, the topography, the location, or the surroundings. And that those constraints inhibit your ability to to have privileges enjoyed by others in a similar manner based on your zoning district. So you potentially you would need to look at either the issue of size or shape or topography and provide a concise response explaining that relationship to this particular finding in a letter. And then provide that to us. Staff would review it, and then we'd provide our uh position on that. Um I don't know enough about the natural constraints of this site um to advise, but staff would look at it and um Jean could probably advise if initially what our potential concerns would be if we have any.
Well, I have a question, a slightly different question. The the uh the whole area here, Woodland Acres, was annexed in two thousand and six. Um it was previously county. And now it's um part of Los Altos. Uh there are a lot of uh things that don't fit the current law, don't fit the current um standards. And some came because they were there. Is is there any consideration for grandfathering a setback that was designed back when it was county?
Yes, I mean, there's, I think as as associate planner Jalou provided in the report, I think they're granting the one-time exception for a deck, I think, on the lower level. So the municipal ordinance does allow for a one-time exception, which will allow you to continue a non-conforming setback up to fifty percent or twenty feet, whichever is less. Um other than that, there are no other exceptions except the variance process.
And and this is Ja, uh this is Ja speaking, and I also want to add that the that provision of the non-conforming extension does specifically uh states that it should not be applied to the second story.
Oh.
Okay. It would have been really nice to know that a variance was needed when we reviewed this project. We've we've gone in so many times already with this to planning.
Chair, Chair Harding, uh
Yes.
Can we, uh members of the public or the applicant should be only responding when the chair is asking questions or members of the commission?
So I I want to hear uh from Sean in terms of uh how you think we should proceed.
I believe that you should proceed with discussing the particular item um in regards to based on the report that submitted to you. If since the applicant has advised their concerns with the variance, then you may want to have a discussion and inquire with the applicant at that time whether they would support a continuance to consider a variance for that deck. If they feel strongly that they should have that deck, then we need to properly notice it so that we can consider it. I'm not aware that staff doesn't support the the variance. It's just we aren't, we do not have it noticed sufficiently to be able to allow you to speak about it today.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Uh commissioners, uh let's uh let's hear from each of us what you think should be the next step, um whether to continue it and ask them to come back requesting the variance or to approve it uh as is without the variance. So let's hear from commissioners. Michael? Or David, go ahead.
Well, I'm just thinking, it it doesn't make sense. We've heard from the applicant that the deck uh as proposed with the condition of moving it to the right is not satisfactory, doesn't work, and it wasn't what they thought. Um and I can't speak about other issues that I'm thinking about in regards to that, so I think their probably next step uh would either be to, you know, like you said, sort of scrap it or go with try to redesign it where it is, but I think redesign where it is is going to involve not only moving the deck, but also moving the stairway, getting to the first level deck in order to get up to the second level. So I think that's going to be a bigger process. Um you know, it might make more sense for them to look into the variance and get a little bit more feedback from staff in regards to that variance. Um and and kind of go let them go from there.
Okay, thank you. Other um Chepe, your thoughts?
Um I I know that going through variance could be difficult, um because it's pretty much established in um the ordinance. Um but I I I don't know, I think it's worth pursuing. Um I I think the deck gives um brings a lot of justice to the project, especially because it's kind of like floating on top of a um of a forest, kind of like the woods, because that's the shape of the land. It's really sloped down. And it's kind of nice to to be out there in the in the canopies. I don't want to step on anybody's toes or anything, but um I just I'm I just think it'll be worth pursuing to get to get that permit in any with if if there's any flexibility or any exception that we can possibly find. Um that's that's how I would go about it. Um that's just what I would do.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, I I pretty much uh agree with uh Chepe. You know, I mean, but in my opinion, I mean, some variants are reasonable. It's just certain projects, certain certain application, they have a um they have a hardship or difficulty meeting the current because of the particular situation on the property or the the situation. So if they the the applicant believes was by to pursue it and they think it's a hardship, I I believe the, you know, the city staff and the the commission are all reasonable. Um you know, you just have to go back and um incorporate whatever the variance properly uh into the application. Um you know, that's I mean, I I don't think it's gonna be too difficult. It's reasonable, especially especially this is a pretty unusual site and you have no rear neighbor and with the creek and both your neighbors are, you know, have no no opinion, no comments. Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you, Stuart.
Yeah, a lot of what I would say has already been said. This is a tough one. Um it's a it's an interesting, unusual site, and the neighbors have consented. And I understand the impact on the design to comply, so I I get that side of it, but on the other side of it, we're a rules-based society and uh we have a municipal code that says that we can't do that on the second floor. So I don't see that we have any alternative except to go through the variance process.
Okay, thank you. I'm in agreement, and it uh seems that uh the way that I would say is that we would continue this project, ask them to come back with the uh request for variance and other other items that may be. Uh if that is uh what others think, could I have a motion to continue?
Well, don't don't we still have to take uh
Oh, we have to
input or public input and all of that?
We do. You're right. Thank you. We do. You're right. Thank you. Okay. Sean, anyone who would like to speak to this?
If there's any member of the public who'd like to speak on this item, and this is for this particular item at five, seven, nine, zero Arboretum Drive only. If you'd like to speak about this item, please raise your hand. If you cannot raise your hand, please unmute yourself. So Marwin, this is intended for members of the public, not applicants or architects. I'm sorry, Mr. Eways, you did have an opportunity for 10 minutes to provide comments. So if there's any other member of the public who'd like to speak on the item, Chair Harding, it doesn't, it doesn't appear that I have any other members.
All right. Thank you. Then let me close the, the public.
And Chair Harding.
Yes.
Just so you're aware, typically when you're making a motion like this, that maybe is contrary to what the applicant may want, usually you try to check in with them to see if they would support that or not.
Okay.
You're not obligated, of course.
Right.
Chair Harding, I, I have one other point for discussion.
Yes.
Seeing, given the changes that are coming up for planning, et cetera. Where does this land the applicant? Because it's probably not going to come back to us.
Uh, that's a big question and I don't, I certainly don't know the answer to that. Maybe we go back to Sean and ask him his.
No.
Of how, how we should proceed.
It, it would return to you. I mean, it's our understanding that we're projecting that the designer review commission will dissolve. We'll hold its last meeting, the first meeting in April. So you potentially have the entire month of March and then the first meeting in April for. And our hope is to try to get this to you in March. So we have one additional meeting if it's necessary, so we can have it resolved through the DRC.
All right. Thank you, Sean. So close, close comments to the public and discussions. We've had some. Is there someone that would like to make a motion on this project?
Chair, let's talk with the applicant if that's something they want to pursue.
Okay. All right, Mr. Eways.
Yes.
What do you want to do?
It's going to cost me a lot more money, but I'm happy to pursue a variance. Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Back to the commissioners, is someone to make a, a motion?
I move to continue. Item number three, SC twenty-two dash zero, zero, two, nine. At fifty-seven ninety Operantum Drive to continue and come back with the revision and the variance.
Okay, second?
A second.
All right. Sean, would you call the role, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Klein?
Hi.
Commissioner Mantika?
Hi.
Commissioner Blockus?
Yes, I.
Vice Chair Ma?
Hi.
Chair Harding?
I. Carries five, zero, correct, Sean?
Yes, correct. It does carry five, zero.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Everyone on the project and let's move to our next item. Which is, well, the next item has been continued. That was item twenty-two, SC twenty-two thousand Crooked Creek Drive. That has already been continued. So let's go to item five, SC twenty-two, zero, zero, two, three, four, thirty-five Casita. And this is Sean, it's your project.
Let me. Sorry, I have to adjust all the screen. Good, good evening, Chair Harding Commissioners. The project before you is for a designer review application at four thirty-five Casita Way. This is a designer review application for a first and second story addition to the existing single-story house. The project includes fifty-eight square foot front porch, five hundred sixty-one square foot addition at the first story and a new seven hundred and four square foot second story. The subject property is located in a consistent character neighborhood as defined in the city's residential design guidelines. Parcels of the neighborhood are of similar size, consistent front setbacks. Structures are a combination of older and some newer, uh, single-family homes. The slide is the site plan. Staff notes that there were errors on data table number one, on page one. The updated corrected page was uploaded to the city's website for the public and staff did provide the updated sheet or the updated report to the commissioners. This provides an update of that. And that is available to the public. The project does comply with the existing and required development standards for the R one-ten district. A, a five hundred and forty-eight square foot addition is proposed along the northeast corner of the site, which is located here, which would add a master bedroom, walk-in closet, master bathroom along the left side. In addition, there is a twelve point eight square foot addition along the front. This is located here in this hatched area that is proposed in addition to the main home. The applicant is also proposing a fifty-eight square foot addition for projecting front porch. And the applicant is also proposing a covered terrace along the rear, which is a hundred and twenty-eight square feet. The design includes a seven hundred and five square foot second story addition to the existing one-story house. The second story will include an area for a loft, two bedrooms, two walk-in closets and two bathrooms. With regards to the building setbacks at the second story, the second story addition does exceed, which complies with the second story setbacks as described in the updated table one or on the updated table on sheet A one. To discuss the modifications to the structure besides the additions, the applicant is proposing the removal of the original brick wing scoding and it will be replaced with a stack stone wing scoding. The removal of four small to medium-sized windows and the replacement with one large three-panel window in bedroom three, one large size three-panel window in bedroom four and one large size panel when three-panel window in the kitchen. This is along the first floor. Furthermore, they are proposing the proposed projecting porch, which is conveyed here and then expanding the front of the home forward, which is the twelve point eight square foot addition along the front. The applicant is also proposing a new garage door. Along the left side of the structure, the applicant at the first store is proposing replacement of two windows with one new medium-sized window in the master bedroom, a large-sized window in the office and a small-sized window in bedroom two and a new bedroom, a new medium-sized window in bedroom number two. Along the interior right side elevation, which is here, the, the applicant is replacing the previously existing windows with with two windows and a door with a small-sized window and the door to the garage and two medium-sized windows in the kitchen. These are the kitchen windows. This is a window in the garage with a door entering into the garage or exiting. Along the rear elevation, the, the terrace is located here, the hundred and twenty-eight square foot terrace with the, with the roof form here. They're, they're proposing to add a stone veneer columns combined with stucco here on either side of the, of the structure. They are proposing the replacement of two windows and a two-panel sliding door with a large three-panel window in the kitchen, a small window in the master bedroom and a five-panel sliding door in the great room and a four-panel sliding door in the master bedroom. With regards to exterior materials, the project is, is matching the aesthetics of surrounding properties. It, it is compatible overall with materials that are being proposed. The applicant is, is recommending smooth hand-travelled stucco siding, which is compatible with residences in the neighborhood. The proposed versus stucco story roof materials are concrete tile. Other materials include stone veneer with precast cap, hardy trim, aluminum clad windows and wood entry doors and garage doors. For wall place to the second story, the proposed addition will feature nine-foot tall wall plates, which is compatible with existing homes in the immediate neighborhood context. The second floor is centered over the first story, visually softened by being recessed within the roof line of the structure. And the design staff believes will not create abrupt changes as well proportioned or articulated to the, to the, to reduce overall bulk and mass of the structure. As noted in the report, the structure will be twenty-four feet tall, which is three feet less than the maximum permitted height of twenty-seven feet. Staff believes, does believe the proposed design is appropriate in regards to its overall scale and mass. In regards to this slide. With regards to the right side elevation on the second story, there is one small window with a minimum window sill height of five foot. There is a, sorry, I missed it. And then there are additional windows in bedroom number. Sorry, one second. Sorry. So there's one small window with a sill height of five feet for bedroom number four and bedroom number five. Due to the tall sill heights of the windows in these locations, staff believes they will not create reasonable privacy impacts consistent with the design review commission's typical standard of four foot six inches, which it does exceed. Along the rear elevation, there are four windows proposed, one small-sized window with a sill height of four foot nine inches for the loft, a large two-panel window in bedroom number four with a three foot six inch sill height and one medium-sized window in bedroom number four with a four foot nine inch sill height. Staff understands that due to the sill heights, there is a concern that it may potentially create privacy concerns due to the significant setback from the rear of the house, which does exceed twenty-five feet. And the proposed, and retention of existing every screening, the proposed addition of both bay laurel and pittsiform tennefolium along the rear and right side of the property. Staff does believe it mitigates potential private concerns along the rear and sides. The applicant is, the plans do indicate there are sixteen existing trees that are depicted on the site. Please again, see sheet A one for that. The applicant is proposing the removal of no protected trees. Again, protected trees or trees that are over fifteen point four inches in diameter when measured at a height of forty-eight inches. Since the house was not, or no fixture was within the inner two-thirds of any protected tree, staff did not require an arbor support consistent with the tree, with the submittal requirements for two-story projects. Since the project includes a new house and new landscaping that exceeds five hundred square feet, it is subject to water efficient regulations. A condition of approval is required within the, within the project findings to require compliance with water efficient regulations. Staff does believe the overall landscaping does meet the city's landscape regulations and street tree guidelines. Staff did receive some late correspondence from members of the public from, I believe, five individuals with three supporting the project, one supporting the project with a request and one both supporting and not supporting the project. Those were both attached, attached to the online submittal and then they were also provided individually to each of the commissioners in emails this week. This concludes SASS presentation. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Commissioners, questions for Sean?
I have none.
Stuart?
I do have a question. Sean, could you explain the sill height, either rules or guidelines for second stories in the city codes?
Well, it's not an objective standard. So when we're looking at issues of privacy or the commission's looking at issues of privacy, we're relying upon the single-family design review guidelines, which are guidelines and are subjective. The commission over time, over the last number of years, have established a practice where they have believed that a four foot six sill height at the second story for windows is sufficient to reduce potential privacy impacts to adjacent properties. That is to the discretion of the commission. If they would like to change that, they can. But it is for them to interpret the design guidelines and how they, they apply, but we do not have a set standard.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioners for Sean? Saying.
Chair, 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 I have a question.
Yeah.
For Sean. Um, Sean, um, so I understand that there were a couple of correspondents sent in the last few days from the neighbor about their privacy concern. Were you aware of that during the, that the process or you, you also just got the notice from the last few days? Has a applicant mentioned to you during the process?
No, I mean, the only thing I had was the outreach and some of the parties that had submitted with the outreach had indicated they supported the project. And then in the most recent emails, they had indicated they no longer support it and they now oppose it. So it was relatively new, at least to staff, we weren't aware.
Not true. Not true.
Uh, Mr. Vassar, would you hold your comments, please? It's not your time.
All right. Thank you, Sean. That's all I have.
Okay, any other commissioners wishing to ask Sean questions?
No, not at this time.
No, Chepe, David?
Yeah, I'm still no.
Still no. Okay, so I can, I can close that portion and ask now. The owner architect, architect has ten minutes to state your case.
All right. Hi, I'll start. I'm Steve Cullum of RH Associates Architects. Both the applicant and the architect for the project. Along with us is the owners Paveer and Sugand. And we also have the landscape architect Pam Jones, in case you have questions for them later. Thanks, Sean, for working with us on the submittal and for describing the project to the committee. RH Associates has designed quite a few two-story residences in Los Altos and we're very aware of the concerns and the biggest concerns, the biggest issues is privacy. There's
Yeah, right.
Been ways of mitigating these privacy issues and we handled all of them. Any side-facing second story windows should have four foot six sill heights and we are proposing five feet on those. The rear-facing windows aren't normally as sensitive as side windows because there's a bigger distance to the neighbor. You have at least two twenty-five foot rear yards. And our distance from our second story to the rear neighbor's wall is over eighty feet. Second story balconies can cause additional privacy issues, but we are not proposing that on this project. And now along the, the rear windows, as Sean said, we've got four windows there. Three of them have five-foot sills actually. And the one window, that's the bedroom window, has to have at least a, you know, three foot eight sill heights to provide egress and we've got a three foot six sill height there. Now, the other way to mitigate some of this stuff is landscape screening and we've provided an extensive landscape plan that shows screening for this project. Now, can I share my screen?
Yes. Or Sean, can you, Sean's in control.
Sean, are you in control?
Yes, you can show the screen.
All right, on this slide, which you already saw before, I've added checkmarks to properties that the owners reached out. See, I think we know that the neighborhood outreach is very important and we try now to do that at the very beginning. So back in September of last year, I had Sugand and Paveer go out and talk to the neighbors and they got signed statements from all of these checks here. That's eight. That's pretty good.
That's not true.
Well, you'll have your time, I'm sure. Well, you'll have your time, I'm sure. But I have a signed document, so. That's that thing. Anyway.
If you continue to interrupt, I won't allow you any time. So please don't interrupt.
To the chair, if if it continues, we'll place Mr. Vassar in a waiting room and then we'll call you when the item comes up and we'll bring you back to the meeting if necessary. So. Please, please avoid that or we do not want to put you in a waiting room. Thank you.
Put you in timeout. Okay, so. We got these late, just a week ago, we got a letter from Mr. Vassar from the neighborhood behind. And then we got another one a couple of days ago. And so, look, we already addressed. This issue, I mean, because we're we're very concerned and aware of these mitigation. Things. And so I had the landscape architect. Draw up what the screening looks like in the back. This is twelve foot tall after two years all along here and there's already some screening over here. So I think. I think that's really about it. I want to thank the Design Review Committee for taking the time to. Consider this item tonight and I look forward to your approval of the project with the conditions that are in the staff report. If you have any questions for me, the owners, landscape architect, we're here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cullen. Commissioners, questions? For the architect?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay, David?
Has there been any discussion with the neighbor behind in regards to. Replacing the somewhat dated and small fence. With something, you know, like a six foot fence, good neighbor fence with a one foot lattice in addition to the privacy screening.
I was not aware of any conversations, perhaps. I think Paveer and. Sugand are here, then maybe they can answer to that.
Given the, this is Paveer, given the storm that happened a few weeks back, not just. The neighbors behind, we have been also chatting, we sent an email to Mark as well as are the neighbor on the left of. Behind us as well as. The one on the right, all these fences have also become a little crooked with the wind. So we have been having conversations to get the fence fixed and behind the behind a property, the fence that we share with Mark and the one next to them. We have been, one of them has gotten a quote already to get a. Six foot fence, but then it's shared between the neighbors, so. We are working through it hopefully next few days. As the wind. Subsides, we can come to agreement on picking a court and fixing those fences.
Okay. David, that answer your question?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank.
Okay, other commissioners, questions for owners or architect?
Yes, I have a chair, I have a question for the owner. I would like to know more about your neighbor's outreach. Because the according to according to Sean's presentation. As your part of submitted documents, I only saw three neighbors. That support your application. But according to the architect and the one the joint he show, he say. You have approval from all the surrounding neighbor, it looks like a seven or eight of them. So can you please clarify? The discrepancy between what I saw on the submitted document and what the architect said, can you? And then also would like to know more about how you communicate and your communication history with Mr. Vassar, Mark Vassar.
Are you asking Steve Cullen that or the owner?
I'm asking the owner, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so if I may just present something that hopefully that's okay.
Sure. You are muted. Sorry, you are muted.
I'm not seeing anything.
That's been happening to me lately as well. As soon as you, as soon as you share a screen, it freezes. Yeah, we can see you homeowner, we can see you and your wife, but we. We haven't seen what you were attempting to present.
Okay.
Were you going to present the letters?
Yes.
Okay, because I can I can probably do that.
Yep, sounds good. And I'll talk to it. Sorry, you couldn't hear us. What I was saying is we are taking the printout. And we had gone to each of the houses around the neighborhood, met the neighbors, showed the plan. Walked them through it. Some of them took the plan and at the end of the plan, we had. Page like this with an empty their name and the number and for them to sign and await for them to be contacted. And some of them looked at it, signed it then in there. Some of it said, we need to take a look at it and they gave it. At the end of the day or the next day back to us. And we had gone to each of the houses and shown them and. Also.
So this is Chair Harding, at least on my screen, it's very hard to see what's there. I think Michael's question is. Do you have a a letter for each of these? He was questioning the number of. Neighbors that executed something.
Right, so I'll I'll just go really quickly through them. That's four sixteen Alicia. Hang on for a second. Where are they? Here they are. Okay, there's.
Chair Harding, those letters are provided in the staff report as attachments.
Right. Michael, I'm trying to. Move Michael's question forward.
Yeah, four twenty one. Four sixty two. Four fifty nine. Okay, one I think is four sixty seven, perhaps something like that. And then. The last one we have is that one from four. Four forty.
Got it. Okay. And then what's your thanks? Thanks for showing all this. And what's your communication? Can you describe more communication history with your rear neighbor? That's four one six. Alicia.
Yeah, so we had gone to four one six also and similarly shown the plan to Mark and. He had looked at it and he had signed it right then and there and told us best of luck with the plans and. Yep, that was it around the same time in September or so.
So at that at that time, did he express any privacy concern?
At that time, he didn't express any privacy concerns, but he looked at it. Through the pages and said, okay, and signed it.
Okay, okay, all right. All right. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, then, thank you. Owners and architect, any additional questions from commissioners? Stuart?
No questions.
Okay.
No questions.
All right. So. Comments to the public, from the public?
Chair Harding, did you want to set a time for?
For yes, three minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Vassar, you're not you're muted at the moment if you wanted to speak.
Recognized?
Yes, Mr. Vassar, if you'd like to speak.
Okay. I've already submitted a letter of my. Objection to this invasion of my wife and I's privacy of the last thirty eight years. I've spoken to Parver, who I like a lot, he's a very nice man. I dispute. I did sign a paper, I saw no plans, he came to my door, he said, we're gonna do. Do a remodel and you know, and this and that and we're gonna. And I and we talked and I said, so what are you gonna do? He said, we're gonna have a second story. I said, great, that's the end of my privacy. I saw no plans ever, okay? The first time I saw the plans was when I went online. Here to the Los Altos thing, so I I was never given plans. I signed it because I was being a good neighbor that he had come. And I appreciated that he came to my house and explained what he was gonna do. I told him. I was very upset about it and I he came again the other day when his son. Lost his airplane in my backyard and wanted to get it. And I again told him how unhappy I was about what they were doing. And it's obvious they're gonna do it, you guys are gonna approve it and. Like I said in my letter, my wife and I have really enjoyed our thirty eight years of complete. Beautiful privacy in our backyard, it's gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean, are there any other hands up for comments?
If there are any members of the public who would like to speak, please raise your hand or please mute yourself, provide your name if you'd like, but providing your name is optional. I it does not appear we have anybody else who would like, let me see real quick, one second. No, it does not appear we have anyone else who would like to speak coming out.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Close comment, public comments, commissioners. Do you have any questions of any of the public's comments or? Would you like to proceed with our discussion of the project? Stuart, why don't you start?
Well, I guess I have several thoughts. The first is I. Respect Mr. Wasser's concerns about his privacy. And I also respect that somebody can sign a piece of paper and then later withdraw. And change their mind. So none none of that concerns me at all. I I respect his current position. Having said that. I think the neighbors and the architect, the owners and the architect have gone. Above and beyond in presenting a compelling case for addressing the privacy concerns. It's a it's a very long distance to the fence line far more than what's required. They're talking about screening with appropriate landscape. And I heard openness to potentially even a higher fence than what's there now. So, you know, many of us. Don't like second stories and increased density, but it's a fact of life in our town and. The applicant has complied with every rule we have, so. I I'm in favor of approving.
Okay, thank you. Chepe?
I agree with Stuart. I was wondering if we talked to the, I could. Dress with the architect said about the privacy screening in the back, it takes two years for it to grow to twelve feet. I know a good construction like this in addition could could take. It takes some time from here to from here to then, it could probably be somewhere around eighteen months. Or possibly two years depending. Is it? Is there a way? To during the construction to since as far away from the house. Would it be possible to to plant these privacy screens that are very very early on? So by the time that the house is being built. The the privacy screening is growing up to a certain point. And can we mitigate the privacy for Mr. Vassar? With some kind of a. Of a wind screen, just kind of like the they they provide in the tennis courts. For some time between the. Privacy screening growing and the people on top of the of the. Of the construction potentially looking over the fence. Would it be possible to? Think of something like this, just to. Just to just to respect Mr. Vassar's privacy.
Would you like to hear from them, Chepe? All right, could you, architect owners, could you respond to that?
I think that would be up to the owners. I think there's certainly. Planting the back screen immediately would be advantageous to everybody. I don't know about the the windscreen situation, though. I don't I don't. I'm not sure about that. Actually, I think. Let's see. No, it doesn't look like I thought the contractor might be popping in, but I don't see him on the list here.
All right.
Paveer, do you have anything to say about that?
Not sure what a windscreen is, but. Obviously, you want to fix the fence as is with the wind condition and then secondly. I think we can do something with the trees. Pam is there. I'm not sure what's.
Okay.
Right, so she's the.
Thank you.
Paveer, if you want me to speak to that, I think that planting the trees early is a good idea. A lot sometimes. We do have clients that do that right, you know, as soon as they get started so that those trees have got a good year under their belt. So that's. That's certainly a doable thing and the windscreen is an interesting idea. Chepe, I could look into what that could look like, but I haven't used one of those before.
Thank you. Maybe something tied to the to the house itself, but yeah.
Okay, let's.
Can I speak?
Let's close. Let me close again. That was just a brief opening to continue from the commissioners. Discussion, commissioners discussion, Michael?
Yeah, it's a tough situation. Somehow, I mean, that's why I I. You know, I want the owner to clarify because I what I'm seeing like. The the neighbors this sign a statement that the the plan was showed to them. You know, and then the the neighbor signed, but on the other hand. Meet investor say that there's a privacy concern. But from from my point of view, I did visit the the property earlier today. And I saw from. The backs, the the rear yard, actually, there's no existing, there there's there's much, not much of a existing vegetation for the screening. So some kind of screening is definitely needed. And some more substantial is needed, you know, to address the concern. I do agree on that. Fifteen gallon back to Chape's, you know, the private, the the discussion between Chape and the. The the owner and and the landscape architect, fifteen gallon, I recently evolved one. So I do understand from both sides. Fifteen gallon, you know, planting at the end of construction is gonna take several years to become a, you know, a useful screening. So something either, I would say, I would suggest. Either you planted now with. Fifteen or twenty four or twenty five gallon, I know it because I recently evolved one. You know, six feet right now. And two years cannot grow to, I don't know, basically, architect can have a more input. So if we put six feet right now in two years, how much is gonna grow? Nine or ten feet? Or they can. Plan a eight feet tall. Later, I don't know, it depends on the, you know, maybe we'll need the more input. From I would like to hear from other commission as well. As far as the these, as far as the the house design itself, I don't have any problem. I mean, it looks like a decent, it's just right now, I think the 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 privacy is the the only concern here.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Okay, David, you're last.
Yeah, I I guess I'm the. Opposite in in this as far as the privacy and all that. When we compare this to a lot of other homes that we've done. It is a lower in. it is a lower in height, lower in sill plate heights than a lot of the stuff that we have done. I mean, it's twenty-four feet. Uh the last couple we've done is twenty-six, twenty-six and a half. You know, two, two plus feet higher with much uh, you know, similar sightlines and all that. The second story is forty-three feet back from the fence line. I think if you go immediately, put a new fence in, a six-foot fence with a one-foot lattice, get your privacy screening, you know, fifteen gallon or above along there, whenever it is uh possible to grow, you know, I'd have to defer to, uh I guess it's Karen Aiken, the landscaper. Uh you know, how are those gonna be watered if you know, you, you may not have plumbing out there and all that to get water to it, to make them grow, they could die, I don't know. Uh but I think first thing you get it, you know, get the fence in, have the, the lattice, put the trees in and get the property dealt, but I don't see this as a huge privacy issue. Is it completely different than what uh Mr. Vassar has currently? Yes. But I'm six foot one or six foot two and I can stand in the middle of uh the applicant's backyard and see completely into his backyard. And it's because it's like a five and a half foot tall fence, it's an older stick post fence and there's no uh trees or anything really that blocks any of that out. So right now, uh you know, it's relatively not private. Uh and that's what we're looking at. We're, we're not saying any new construction in Los Altos, it's a two-story, has to provide absolute privacy to every person in the surrounding. It is, we try to mitigate any privacy concerns. And that's what we're doing. We're putting a fence in, we're putting uh landscaping in that blocks it off. It's set back. We have windows on the second level that are higher sill heights. So if people are sitting down in those rooms, they're not looking out. Um you know, you can say, well, I'm gonna stand at the back window and look out constantly, but that's really not gonna happen. So
Okay.
I would uh approve this as is with this suggestion that the neighbors get together, replace that back fence with at least a six-foot tall, good, good neighbor fence with a one-foot lattice. Uh and go from there.
Okay, David, would you please make the motion?
Yeah, I move to approve uh the design review application SC twenty-two dash zero zero two three for the property at four thirty-five Casita Way, subject to the attached listings and findings.
Is there a second?
Uh Chair.
Michael, second?
No, no, sorry. No, 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 sorry. It can, can I have a request? Uh because when I, when I spoke and I was asking if we can have a, the landscape architect uh talk a little bit about how she would, in her opinions, professional opinion, how she, because they, they, they done quite a bit of this. From her perspective, what's the best way to address this one with the, what's her best suggestion? Um for addressing this, I would like to hear that before I, I, I vote on this, the, the, this item.
All right, Pam Jones, would you speak, please?
Yeah, um I, you know, I think that maybe the best way to go about this because of that um, that concern with, and the fence maybe being a little lower than we were hoping. Putting a twenty-four inch box instead of the fifteen gallon is gonna give you a, you know, quicker grow. That when you put the twenty-four inch box in though, you're not going to put as many in because they're just a little wider to begin with. So um we might put a few less trees in because of the spacing, but they'll be taller, faster, they'll fill out faster. So I, I think that probably doing a twenty-four inch box is going to be, and putting it in right away, there will be a challenge with watering. Maybe, maybe it won't be so bad. It just depends on the contractor and how the water is gonna be, you know, shut off at what times. And so it might require hand watering at worst, but um at least getting those, those trees in a year before the construction is done is gonna give them a big benefit, get a couple of extra feet there before it's.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Pam. Back to commissioners, is there a second on the motion?
I second the motion.
All right, uh Sean, call the roll, please.
Um, I'm sorry, uh Commissioner Klein.
You're muted.
I'm sorry, I.
Commissioner Antico.
Hi.
Commissioner Blockus.
Hi.
Uh commi- uh Vice, Vice Chairman.
Hi.
Uh Chair Harding.
Hi.
Uh the most carries.
All right. Thank you very much, Sean. Thank you very much, uh architect and owners.
This is Mark. Thank you very much.
All right.
I appreciate it.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Democracy in action.
Thank you, Mr. Vassar. We're now closing the public comments and we're moving now to SC twenty-two zero zero three one, one, two, four, eight, Verahueta, and it is again Sean.
Okay, one second. Sorry, I have to shift things on my screen. Apologize. Okay, uh good, uh good evening again Chair Harding. Um uh this is a project at twelve forty-eight Via Huerta. Uh it is a designer view application for a new house. The project includes three thousand five hundred and two, two square feet at the first story, six hundred and twenty-four square feet at the second story. Uh the subject property is located in diverse character neighborhood, is defined in the city's residential design guidelines. Properties located in Via Huerta between Sierra Ventura Drive and Via Maderos and the site slopes upward uh from the street frontage. Along uh Via Huerta, there are primarily a two-story ranch-style homes, although many may have a one-story appearance from the front of the property. Um the exterior materials that are common in the neighborhood include uh stucco horizontal siding, poured batten siding and wood trim accents. Roof forms are mostly uh low-sloped, moderately sloped roofs, hipped uh pitched gable and Dutch gable roofs with composition shingle siding. Um residents have an overall uh low-scale horizontal appearance. Um that's between approximately eight to nine feet in height, garages that face forward. A neighborhood character appears consistent, uh consistent through rustic materials, similar house scale and roof forms. The project uh is consistent with development standards for the R one ten district, including setback, daylight plain, percentage of front yard landscaping and height. One second. Um the proposed two-story house has a traditional style that uses design elements, materials that are compatible with an immediate neighborhood contact. It does propose both gable and hip roof forms, articulated massing, it does have a steep pitched uh six and twelve roof form, but we do believe it has high-quality materials that are compatible with the neighborhood. Project does do a good job, staff believes, of integrating the hip and gable roof forms, the proposed recessed front porch, which staff believes are high-quality elements in the neighborhood. It is utilizing uh composites and shingle, stucco siding, uh stone or a wood siding, uh veneer, um wood trim, um and uh which staff leaves are integral to the overall design of the house. Let me switch this. Uh due to the slope of the site, the house does appear as a one-story with a tall finished floor height when viewed from the street. Portion of the structure is recessed into the grade along the sides and rear, which reduces the perception of bulk along the sides and rear. And due to the slope of the lot, there are multiple first and second-story levels for the home. Along the front and right side of the house, a garage proposed at the first floor level. Master bedroom and master bath proposed at the second-story level directly above the garage area. At the first floor level, at the left of the garage and behind the stairs, the applicant proposes a foyer, living room, office, kitchen, nook, three bedrooms, three full baths, one powder room. And at the second floor, the applicant is proposing a multi-function uh family room. Um the residential design guidelines uh talk about uh hillside development and the guidelines do recommend that dwellings on hillside should reflect the topography in their design by following natural contours of the site with minimal grading, using split level and multi-level plans, avoiding tall walls under the first story by stepping the first floor with a grade, screening any open space under the living space and to softly there is utilized screening uh and to avoid tall unbroken spaces of wall. Do, uh do the upscale nature of this, of the lot, the project minimizes the bulk and scale of the second sorry, I'm on the wrong thing. Apologize, I'm. Uh this, the resident, the, the design does avoid, uh staff does avoid, staff does understand that though it does have tall walls along the first story, as noted in the civil drawing sheet uh CC one, the proposed uh primary first floor has a topographic height of three twenty-three feet. Um and the existing house has a topographic height of three hundred and twenty-two point five one, which is a difference of point five one. While the house does have a tall uh wall beneath the first floor of the, of the front elevation and small, small segments of the left and right side of the structure, staff believes the potential bulk, bulk impacts are similar to the perceived bulk impacts of the existing house due to maintaining similar finished floor heights. Um along the first, uh first and, front and right side of the house, the first story garage are proposed with nine-foot plate heights. Second story, um the second story master bedroom, um walk-in closet laundry stairs are proposed with an, also with a nine-foot sill height. And the second floor is proposed uh with the multifamily room is proposed with an eight-foot, two-inch plate height. What's before you on the screen reflects uh what I had stated previously. It does show the elevated finished floor, which staff believes is similar to the existing house. Um as the structure is pushed back, there is a degree of cutting that is occurring, which does reduce the perception of the structure to a one-story. Um this provides the uh, again, the photo rendering of the structure from the street frontage. Materials board are provided to the commission uh virtually. Um it does include uh the materials for the overall structure. Uh staff does believe, I'm gonna try to back this up, sorry, that the proposed project is sensitive to the overall scale of the neighborhood by incorporating similar massing uh found in the neighborhood context. Um while the house does have a steeper roof pitch of six and twelve, the roof form does successfully obscure the second-story uh family room, which staff believes minimizes the potential bulk at the second story. While this design has a, a larger overall bulk and mass and scale as compared to the uh lower-scale neighbors, staff does believe that due to the hillside context, the limited visibility of the property from the site and rear, the design appears to reasonably address the city's concerns regarding designer view for bulk and mass for neighborhood context in a hillside area. A comprehensive landscape plan is uh provided. The landscape plan includes maintaining the existing trees. Um the project will comply with the city, city's water fishing regulations due to proposing uh new structure. And staff does uh support the project and uh recommends approving it consistent with the conditions and finding. Thank you.
But thank you, Sean. Uh let's see, I went out there just to be first uh and uh it, I didn't feel safe in trying to get kind of past the dug-up driveway, so it's um, I can only go by what uh, what the plans say. I, I wasn't able to, to get into the backyard or to look in that way. So other commissioners, do you have questions for staff?
Yes, excuse me, could you hear me? My name is Suzanne Holland.
Yes, yes, but uh would you please, would you? I can hear you and would you please wait until we have public comment? We are now discussing a closed session in a way between the commission and staff. Thank you.
Oh, wait.
Commissioners, are there other other questions for Sean?
Yeah, Sean, I got a couple. Um so it's a hillside. Um there's a giant hole in the back, formerly a swimming pool or still a swimming pool. How much fill and earth movement uh is going to go into this? Because you notice there'll be minimal grading. Uh but there's gotta be a bunch because they're either gonna have to bring dirt in or swish it around to fill a pretty substantial-sized pool.
Um we do not have the uh amount of fill. Um traditionally, at the conceptual stage, we, we do not require for them to provide the calculation. However, we do have condition number seventeen that does require that uh at time of building permits, the middle, that they provide a grading and drainage plan that provides the actual uh off-haul um for any grade and fill cuts. So that is a requirement, is condition seventeen, but I do not have it. We can always reach out, speak to the applicant and to the architect to see if one of those numbers for you.
Um, I will be the civil engineer for the projects. Um we were, we have a soil uh engineer on the project, so pretty much the last job that we did, we do a low compaction field, every two foot or every one foot, compact it and all the way back. And uh since we are extending to the back of the buildings, there's some excavations, pad elevations that we are extending to one story. Uh hopefully, the, the, by estimating the pad and also uh the pad and also the, 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 the crossbase and also the trenches should be, hopefully it's enough to, to fill the swimming pool. If not enough, we probably will get some, a few material, but we do believe that based on our preliminary civil drawings, we should have enough to fill that swimming pool.
Okay. And then Sean, thank you. Um is this a complete demo, start from scratch? Or are we keeping some, the, the plans frankly to me are not that great and a little bit difficult to follow? So uh could you, Sean, tell me, is this, are they completely taking the whole house out? I know whole house uh uh remodelers are out there, bit, taken parts of it out, but it, is the whole house gonna be gone? And then rebuilt as a brand-new structure or they using, okay. And then third, uh although this deck isn't all that important because it's in the front, I don't see anything to me showing the depth of the deck and the little patio. Uh I'm assuming it's about the same size as what the existing deck uh is, is again, but I can't really tell.
If we, um so the single-family residential design guidelines uh in speaking about decks are, are referencing decks and potential privacy accused to the sides and rear. So we have not traditionally provided information regarding decks along the frontage since potential concerns and privacy per the design guidelines are referencing side and rear impacts to privacy, not along a street frontage. If you need that, we can always require that from the applicant or request that.
No, I'm just wondering where, where it is. Um okay, that's. Hold on.
Okay, David, are you, do you have any more questions?
Yeah, let me like through my notes. Uh no, the roof was answered. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Chepe?
Um no, I'm pretty familiar with that street. I've done a few projects in that street. And um I think, I think the solution on, on the facade, it looks great from a, from, from the street and it's really broken in the, I think it'll uh bring good, like a good um, good line to the neighborhood, a good visual line to the neighborhood. Looking at the plans right now, you know.
Thank you. Uh Chepe, Stuart? You're muted.
As usual, uh no questions.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
I have no question.
All right, uh uh next we move to the uh architect and owner for their presentation. You have ten minutes.
Yes, um good evening, uh commissioners, uh good evening, planners and. Good evening, commissioners, good evening, planners, and good morning, good evening, neighbors. Yeah, I'm an architect, I'm Henry Zan, and I did send the presentation to Sean. And Sean, if you want me to share my screen, I'm more than happy to. And if you would like to present it to PDF, I can follow. Yes, yes, that's the one. Thank you so much, Sean, for your help and thank you so much for your hard-working and under your advice and it's this project been a little while and I believe we refined the design and made it better and better. Next page, please. And this is the perspective which Sean showed earlier and at the site, at the right-hand side is sort of the agenda, what we are going to talk about during this presentation. Yeah, as you all know, this is a location map. And we Googled it and also we went to the site, we took some pictures, and this is an impression, this whole image just give you the impression what the site looks like. Next one. And this is the cross-street neighbor. This is the image of their backyard. Thank you. I heard one of the question, which is hard to read the joint, I totally agree because we combined the survey joint with the site plan together, and I hope this site plan would help you to understand slightly better that I agree and we have a dotted line, blue dotted line with a gray area, which is the existing house, and the blue portion is the swimming pool behind it. And there's a black line, of course, is the new construction opposed. Next one, please. And this is landscape architect did the landscape plan, and basically, we try to keep as much as, which is as possible and not really touch too much of the existing vegetation. We just use the swimming pool as a backyard patio. And even the height, even the elevation and everything, we try to keep as much as possible of the existing condition. Next, please. And this is the house plan. I realize the house plan is sort of hard to read because we combine all three levels together, so I just highlighted it with a different color and with different light work, so can show slightly better. Next. And then, you can tell I moved the basement garage to the location underneath of the main floor and also I put the attic floor on the top, so you can see all this how we combined it together. And go next, elevation, please. And this is the general massing of the elevation. As Sean mentioned earlier, we tried, even though we doubled, we almost actually slightly more than doubled the size of the house, but we tried our best to tuck under the garage under the dirt and even the portion of the first floor under the dirt. And then, even the attic family room is under the roof, basically, you have an impression that the house is still one floor and not really too much outstanding than your neighborhood. Next, please. And this is both sections of the house from different direction, and again, the gray area shows the existing house, cutting section. So, you can see from the top section, the proposed house is slightly taller than the existing one-floor house, but slightly shorter though. And then, from the bottom section, you can see the house is slightly longer, but generally at the same place of the existing structure. And this overall elevation shows the both side of the neighbor and also some images down below can give you the visual impression of what the neighbor's house looks like. And we tried our best to match the style and we fit in the neighborhood and not touch too much of the existing grid and even the driveway, garage, or at the exactly same place of the existing structure. And we all know, this is a material board. Thank you so much to be given this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Henry. Nice presentation.
Thanks.
Are there any questions for the owners from commissioners?
No question.
No question, Michael? Okay. Stewart, no question? Chepe?
Hmm, no, no question.
Okay. And David?
Nope, no question.
All right. We could then, Sean, go to public comments.
The first person that's advised us is Susan Holland, whose phone number ends in 96, if you'd like to speak on the item. How many minutes do each speaker have?
Three.
How many minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes? Okay, I'll be starting. Can you hear me? Okay.
We can.
Okay, good. I have three points here. The first one is the recorded deed restriction on second stories in all of the home sites in this neighborhood. It is true, in the original deeds, every single lot in this neighborhood prevented a second-story house to be built because they are all view lots. They were sold as premium view lots back in the 60s when this land was first developed after Miss Davis sold it to the developers who built this whole area. Okay, and in fact, to prove that, the neighbors on the other side of me, the original owner of that lot decided he was going to build a second story. He did not read the deed restriction, and so he was unaware what he was doing. He went ahead and called in a tractor and leveled the land below, a whole story below of where it was, then applied to the commission to build a second-story home, and he was denied based on the fact that the deed restriction said no second stories in this neighborhood. So, that person had to resell the lot and somebody came in and had to rebuild the one-story house there because that's what the deed said and that's what the city of Los Altos and the county upheld at the time. Okay, my home has a deed restriction on it, so does the 1248 Via Huerta that is proposing a second story. There is a deed restriction saying you can't do a second story. And so, one, if a second story is built, it absolutely wipes out my view, which was paid for a premium years ago when this home was first built. It devalues my property because this is a view lot. I can see right now from my deck in my living room across that house, the 1248 Via Huerta, I can see all the way from, you know, Oakland and see their fireworks displays, if it's a clear day, of course. And I can see all the way down to San Jose, out through my living room window, I can see, you know, almost up into San Francisco when the jets are flying up there. That's my view right now. If you build a second story, that will wipe that view out. That view was paid for by my parents when they built this house, and it was mined when I inherited this house from my parents. It will devalue my property to have my view wiped out. The other thing I would like to propose is I would like story poles. I know they're not a normal thing with a house, but in this situation, I would like story poles to be installed so that I can tell where that second story is gonna reach because right now, I can't say, oh geez, 25 feet from the backyard of that house. I don't, I can't tell that. The only way you can be able to tell how tall it's gonna be is with a story pole. And I just, I don't understand who governs deed restrictions in this country, but it would seem to me if there's a deed restriction, that the planning commission should understand that.
Cheerhearting, the three minutes have expired.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry to have to interrupt you, but your three minutes has expired. Thank you for your comments. And are there any other speakers, Sean?
Are there any speakers who'd like to talk, any members of the public who'd like to speak? I see Wei Lin Deng. Are you a member of the public?
Yes, I am. Thank you. May I speak now?
Yes, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'll make this relatively quick. I am the property owner at 1249 Via Huerta directly across the street. Would like to express three points of potential concern. I think the first has to do with the landscaping in the front. First, I was not given any landscaping plans to review. The only pages I was given were drawing plans of the structure and the proposed home. There is a lot of existing foliage along the front by the retaining wall, and I think that's important to preserve because most of the, nearly all the homes in the area have significant vegetation in the front, such that, you know, while the homes are fairly sizable, you know, it doesn't appear extremely prominent. And so, that was unclear to me what the plan is. Right now, if I look out from my window or my property across the street, I see trees mostly, and so I don't want to look across the street and see, look into the windows of the home, the proposed home across the street. The second, I would say, is, I think it's related to the landscaping, is I think with the, you know, the very tall walls and roofline, personally, I think it looks a bit inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. You know, I trust that they're using good materials, that they've been sensitive to how they can utilize the property, but to me, I think if you just went through the neighborhood, you don't see structures that are as large. I understand that, you know, maybe from a certain side or angle, it looks like one-story, but if you look at the drawings, it's clearly a very large, you know, high structure that you see from the street. The third is more just a personal concern, not having to do with whether or not construction or whether or not this is approved, is that I have a very young family, I have a newborn coming in a few weeks, and certainly, this is gonna be somewhat disruptive to us. I would have appreciated if the owner had actually reached out to, you know, engage and, you know, discuss with us the plans. Like, there's been no communication along those lines. I got a letter in the mail from the architect. I think it's good neighbor courtesy with a project of this magnitude to talk to the people who are gonna be most impacted. I also say, you know, the photo that the architect showed in his presentation of our backyard, I was not aware that anyone had entered my property, you know, and that's an example of, I think, the way people engage around projects like this, there's a different way of doing it, in my opinion. So, thank you for letting me express some of my points this evening.
Okay, thank you. Sean, are there any other comments from the public?
If there's any other member of the public who'd like to speak on the item, please raise your hand. I do not see any other hands for us. Nancy and Jim, if you'd like to unmute yourself and provide your name if you'd like or your address, not required.
Thank you. My name is Jim Stoner, and our property is over the rear property line. So, our concerns are mostly preserving our view, and we've spoken to Henry by phone, and he has satisfied me that some very tall cedars, are they?
Italian cypress.
Cypress, thank you. Will be removed, and I see on the Arborist report that they are not regulated, so I think we're satisfied with that. I would like, if I could ask Henry to send me the landscaping plan, because we'd like to be sure that nothing else that's planted back there grows up as high as the existing landscaping that obscures our view. And with that, we're satisfied.
Great. Thank you very much.
One other point, I like the idea that Mrs. Holland suggested that we possibly see some, I don't know what they're called, the poles.
Story poles.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, story poles, yeah. I like that idea, if possible.
Thank you. Sean, are there any other public comments?
Hi, my name is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sean, is there another person wanting to have?
Is there any other member who would like to speak? I did hear a voice, and if you've not already spoken, then you can speak.
Just a quick comment, this is Sandy, and I, this is my childhood.
Sandy, you've already had your time. We're looking for someone that hasn't spoken yet.
I haven't spoken yet.
Cheerhearting, yes, Sandy is not Suzanne.
Okay, all right, Sandy, three minutes.
I just wanted to admit, this was my childhood home, and I actually just sold this recently. My parents lived there for 57 years, and I just wanna say, I like the plan, I was excited to hear about it, and I think it looks very nice. That was it.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay, Sean, do we have anyone else that wants to speak?
Is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak on the item? If so, please raise your hand. If you can't raise your hand, please unmute yourself and provide your name, providing your name is optional.
Hi, Sean, my name is Chris Holland. I just, my mother spoke earlier. I just kinda wanted to echo some of the things that she said, and I had a question for Henry. So, in Henry's plan showing the existing elevation of the existing house compared to the new construction, can, I tried to look on that and see if there was, you know, a difference in height. I mean, I saw the elevation, but it was hard to tell if it was five, six, eight feet. I don't know if he could provide that for us.
Yes, definitely, I can.
All right, is that something to take place later or now?
I believe it's three feet, but.
Oh, it's only three?
Well, according to plans, the existing house is 23 feet tall and the new one is 26 and change.
Okay.
26.3.
Okay, and then, I did read that the new first floor height is actually going to be sunken down into the dirt a little bit lower than the existing. Is that correct?
Actually, they're almost same, six inches different.
Six inches different?
Yes.
Okay, and, you know, I think story poles, because when a member of your team came by my house and dropped off the plans and elevations, and I did review them, kind of standing out on our deck that my mother was referring to regarding our view, and it did seem that, you know, if it was gonna be a little bit higher, that it could possibly obstruct our view from the corner of the deck. So, I would really appreciate if story poles could be built just to see what kind of impact that would have from our property.
Okay, thank you. Let me close comments again and ask Sean the question about story poles. Is that, is that something that is allowed or can be requested in a project?
Would need to be a council direction, and council on Tuesday removed story poles for commercial multifamily projects, so it potentially would be, under state law, may be considered impediment to residential development, and we currently do not have a council policy regarding story poles. So, unless the council directs the commission through council policy, it's not permitted.
All right. Okay, thank you, Sean. All right. Okay, thank you, Sean. Again, closing public comments back to commissioners. Could I hear from each of you of what, how you would like to move forward on this? Michael?
Before I make any comments, I would like to ask the staff, Sean. There's a lady, there was a lady mentioned about the restriction about two-story, the restriction on two-story house in this area. So how does the city take that? I believe this is not the first one. There should be some precedent before. So how did the city handle the the deed restriction versus the city's loan, loan code?
Well, I, I, city's not, at least as planned, I'm not aware of a second story or single story constraint to the development. The track map for the development, which would list any encumbrances on the site, do not reference a one-story constraint. They do talk about a constraint for overhead wires, but there isn't a constraint in regards to the height. If there is a, it is very common in the city to have CCNRs or other constraints that are developed, and those from the city's perspective are civil issues that we're not typically involved in. If there is a deed, the city did not receive a copy of the deed from the applicant. We were not advised that there was a deed. If the commission is concerned, in a worst-case scenario, the item could be potentially continued until we get a copy of a title report so that we can see, and then any documents related to the title report, including any deeds. And if that is a constraint, then we would need to consult with the city attorney, whether we're allowed to enforce that or not. That would be a legal question.
Thank you, Sean. So, okay. Chair, the architect, seems like the architect. It's up to the chair.
Yep.
Chair Harding, would you allow the architect to speak?
Yes, architect, three minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to quickly answer a couple of questions. First of all, congratulations for Mr. Deng. You got the new house across the street. That was a very nice house. And during, we, we bought, I believe our owner bought the house right before you bought the house. So during the open house, we were able to, went back to your backyard. So we never, never really intentionally, you know, get somebody's backyard without somebody's permission. That's the first of all, I would like to say. And by the way, congratulations for your new home.
Thanks for clearing that, clarifying that, Henry.
Yeah, the second thing, Sean, I'm, I'm definitely, I, I definitely am not a professional like you. I guess if they have in rule or regulation want keep the, the, the street, only one story, I believe that would be the flat lot, probably. Yeah, because I saw the flat lot regulation is the, the street one is only have a first of one story and and make sure to not block the, the, the property behind you. I believe, I just guess.
Okay, thank you. David, did that answer your question? Or Michael?
Me, yeah.
Did that answer your question?
Actually, not really. I mean, I, I, Sean sort of answered my question. Because this is the restriction and the, the staff wasn't, was not aware of that until the neighbor mentioned about it. And the applicant did not submit anything related to this one. So, you know, I, I, I would like to defer this, defer this to the staff. He, he, Sean can make it, you know, recommend if this one need to go to, go to the city attorney's office to determine, you know, zoning code versus the deed restriction. I I wanted to kind of defer that before making any decision, also hear what the, the commission said. But as far as the design itself, I don't have any problem. I mean, it, it, even though it's a two-story, but the design is, it's, I'm actually in favor of the the design itself, because it's kind of, it has, it has a very small second floor. And it's kind of playing into the, to the, to the roof and with only a, you know, a small window in the front. So of course, the, the, the site's kind of elevated. You know, as a existing condition, and the house is situated on the elevated, you know, site. So it's already looking kind of raised from, you know, because of the hillside. It's already on the highest spot. So the house will only be a few feet taller than the existing. So, so and then the house is like, the, the design has a different massing, use of different material breaking, breaking up the mass and volume. So I'm in favor, but I'm not comfortable to approve until this legal, you know, issue on the deed restriction versus the only code that clarified.
Okay, thank you, Michael. No, no, no public comments here, no public comments.
I'm a representative from the owner. Can I speak out a little bit about?
No, no public comments. Where this is, this is commissioners asking questions. Stuart?
Yeah, I guess I have three comments. One is the, the design, if I adjust that the design, I think is a good design and fits within the guidelines of the city. So I don't have any issues with the design. Second comment, the quality of the neighborhood outreach, just based on what I'm hearing tonight, troubled me a little bit. I don't think it's a basis for denying the project, but gosh, you have neighbors across the street who are, are telling you that they don't feel they've been consulted enough, and there's going to be disruption with construction and so on. So I really encourage the owner and the contractor to reach out in a more aggressive, aggressive, meaning a more determined way. And I guess my third comment is, this is a big thing with the deed and so I agree with Commissioner Ma that everybody, the owner's not going to want to undertake a project and find out later that there's a problem in the deed forbidding a second story. So I think it's very fundamental that that has to get cleared up. Whether we approve subject to that or continue until that's resolved, I, that's beyond me, but it's a big one. That, that's a big.
Okay. Thank you, Stuart. Chepe?
Same. It would be, it would be good to, to produce, to produce a deed and present it to the city, just, just so nobody steps on anybody's toes legally, at least. If there was some kind of a HOA or some kind of an agreement or limitations to that property limiting it to the second floor, that should be addressed. But just talking about the house itself and the, and the proposed design, it seems like it's almost like a one-story house with a, with a, with a mezzanine in the center. And what that does to the massing, it's a very sloped roof all around, almost like a pyramid. And it really allows the, the upper, the upper homes, the upper neighbor, neighboring homes, which are already on a, on a more elevated pad, it does allow visibility, no obstruction to, to visibility, I would think. I thought the, of the story poles was a good idea until Sean told us the the regulations and regarding them here in Los Altos. But I think just there's, I was looking at the Google Earth and, and the position of the neighboring homes. And I really, really don't believe that the, that the current design will block any view more than it does than, than, than the existing house right now. It's a really small, that's, yeah.
Okay, Chepe, thank you.
Biggest concern is the deed, yeah.
Sorry?
Yeah, the, the only biggest concern is the deed itself.
Is the deed. Yes, okay. David?
Yeah, I got several things. Getting to, let's start with the neighbor across the street and landscaping. I think the landscaping plan, once he gets it, is pretty clear. It looks like a couple of the larger trees in the front will be retained, and then there'll be sort of stepped up bushes or whatnot to kind of diminish what normally we would have anyways with the downward sloping front, where we make that front facade look a little bit less intrusive. So I think that will work for him. The upper left portion of the lot needs a new fence. Again, I would replace that. I think the deed restriction might be a misnomer as far as a term. My assumption is it's probably CCNRs for the neighborhood. But I could be incorrect, but the owner, especially since he just bought it, should have a preliminary title report in his file that would outline all the information in regards to the property. So I think that could be resolved fairly quickly as to what it is. It's probably a civil issue versus the, the, excuse me, the city getting involved in, you know, matters like that. And then lastly, I think there's going to be a fair amount of dirt moving here or there, either fill, infill, bringing dirt in or taking dirt out. I would just ask, and not as a condition or anything, that if there is going to be a few days or weeks where big trucks come in to bring dirt in or bring dirt out, construction-type things, that it would be nice to notify the neighbors so they can understand what the construction process is during that, that they're, you know, hey, during these three days, we're going to have some big trucks zipping up and down. Because I do know, you know, relatively close is the elementary school. So we don't want, you know, any incidents going along there. But my vote would be to pass it on for another week or two until that. Again, I'm presuming it's a CCNR issue. And then, you know, I don't know, Sean, what the city would do with that. Once we know, we just meet and go ahead and vote on it. And then it's up to the neighbors to decide what they want to do in regards to it. But I, I agree kind of with everyone. I don't think at this point we can give it a pass or a fail without getting that cleared up. And frankly, it's a little bit disappointing to get to this point and have, you know, and I'm, I'm not picking the neighbor out as a bad person or whatever, but to have, oh, well, there's a deed restriction dropped on us on the actual day. And I think that falls in part a lot on the applicant in not speaking with the neighbors to see what their concerns are. Because I think if they did ahead of time, a little bit more thorough, they, you know, this, this may have already come out ahead of time, and, and we'd be sitting here actually able to make a decision on the property. So.
Yeah, let me, I want to ask Sean. No, you may not speak. You may not speak. We are still, this is within the discussion of the commission, so. And having had some experience with CCNRs and the ineffective or effectiveness of some portions of them, I think it's a very important thing to get clarified because it can only come back and bite both the neighbors and the owner in this case. So I like the project, but I think there's a lot of exposure on our part for not having enough oversight to, to recommend it, that I think that we should continue this. So do I have a motion? And what's your, yes, Sean?
Um, Sean, if the, if the owner is, recommendation, if the, if the owner is able to provide the title report within the next few days, if they have it in hand, I would recommend that you continue it to a date certain. A date certain would be the March first meeting. Which will allow us to roll over to the very next meeting without having to do public noticing. We will have a sign put up anyways, because we want to do that. But it doesn't require the noticing again if necessary, and this is a simple issue we can address. If it's CCNRs, the city does not enforce CCNRs. If it is a deed, we may, we may enforce the deed constraint, but that'll be a question for the city attorney at that point.
Okay, good. That's good guidance for us. Thank you, Sean. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
I move to continue item number six. It's SC twenty-two dash zero zero three one twelve fourteen via Huerta to the next DRC meeting.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, that was David, I think. Sean, would you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Klein?
I think he said aye, but he is muted. Yep.
Aye.
Commissioner Manteca?
Aye, it's a good idea.
Christian Blockus?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ma?
Aye.
Chair Harding?
Aye.
Motion passed with majority.
All right. Thank you, owners and architects. And I, I think this is the safest way for all parties to, to bring it back once that has been resolved. All right, moving on to commissioner reports and comments. The, I think we all have received the from the interim city clerk, the meeting protocols going forward. For those of you who have never sat in the chamber of council seats, the, you will have a chance, it appears on, on March first. And for some of us who maybe were there earlier, it will be a return. So Sean, any, any updates perhaps on, on that?
So the first meeting will of course be on March first in council chambers. It will be a, also a Zoom meeting. Oh, yeah. So the city has a system where they have like a Zoom television that then will be put before the commission. So it'll be recorded by the television through Zoom. And it'll allow members of the public to attend the meeting virtually if they would like. If members of the public would like to physically be there, there, you know, of course, can it come to the council chambers to attend the meeting? And so that'll be the process. It's our understanding on, on Thursday night, this coming Thursday, the planning commission will be reviewing modifications to fourteen seven six of the ordinance, which is the designer view section of the ordinance. It will propose modifications to the designer view findings. So if any commissioners would like to attend, you're welcome to attend as, not as commissioners, of course, but as private citizens. That will be on Thursday on, and that's also virtual, so you can attend virtually for that.
This Thursday?
This Thursday, yes. This Thursday will be the planning commission considering revisions to both the historical commission ordinance, the designer view commission ordinance, the ordinance for multifamily commercial review, which is fourteen seven eight. And then also revisions to the complete streets commission section of the ordinance. And then the expectation is after planning commission provides recommendations regarding the reorganization of, of the DRC, which is in effect eliminating the DRC, then council will take that upon themselves to consider that. Now, my understanding is, is, is there may be potentially an expanding of the planning commission, which may provide opportunities, expanding and modifications to the organization of a lot of commissions in regards to the number of members. Some commissions may enlarge, some commissioners may reduce in size. Some commissions may enlarge, some commissioners may reduce in size. So there may be an opportunity if commissioners are interested in, in, in participating again, that there may be openings in other commissions soon, since there is restructuring occurring. The last meeting, we're expecting the DRC will be, will be the first meeting in April, will be the last meeting of the DRC. The less the council continues items or takes a different direction in their consideration of the planning commission's discussion of the item.
So this is for the meeting this Thursday. Next scheduled meeting is March first in chamber. Is that correct?
So the next meeting for the, for this DRC is March first and it'll be in the chambers, correct?
And then is there a March fifteenth scheduled meeting?
Yes, there is, there is a March fifteenth meeting. We already have an item scheduled for that and we have an item scheduled for first. Currently only one item, but now we'll have a second item with this last project being moved to that.
For the, yeah, so, so but as sits now, you're not scheduling any projects that we, we would take up other than those that you've discussed?
No, we are bringing forward additional projects. The hope is we're trying to bring back, bring forward only projects that won't result in changes, which is difficult because we're in effect trying to read your minds, but we're trying our very best. This project and other projects, we knew, well, I didn't know this one would have an issue, but we've tried to bring projects that we thought may be concerning for the commission, at least having one or two or three meetings left. But once we get to the fifteenth, we probably will make sure that there are projects that the commission will hopefully support, because if you continue it, then it'll be delayed because it'll have to go to a future body, which will be the zoning administrator or the director, which is going to be a single person reviewing designer.
Yes, okay, commissioners, do we understand our, our status?
Yeah, question, Sean, are the remainder two or three meetings for DRC that are in chambers also going to be Zoom meetings, all three of them?
It's always gonna be Zoom, yeah, they, I think the city has a very complex video system that requires a trained professional to manage, so I think the city is utilizing Zoom due to the technology, so yeah, it'll probably forever in the future be Zoom until they provide training for us on the complex, on that complex system.
Okay, are there any other comments from commissioners? Yes, Stuart?
Yeah. At least reading Angela's email, it says commissioners are required March first to be there in person, not by Zoom, at least according to that email. Is there any clemency, for example, I've already made plans to be out of town on March first and I'm now just getting this notice. So, am I correct that you, we have to be in, in chair or?
Correct, I mean, so the, the state's emergency declaration is expiring, and so a lot of these exceptions to the Brown, to Brown Act and meeting requirements were waived. The city council is eliminating the emergency declaration also. And it's my understanding the Brown Act has been somewhat tightened, so now we don't have the ability to have virtual meetings with commissioners now. So as effective, the first meeting in March, everybody has to be present. If you can't attend, as long as we have a quorum of members, then, then it's just an absence.
Well, we should probably take a roll call because I am also not present. I am out of the, I'm away. And I'll be away for both the first and the fifteenth meeting, so. Do we have our remaining three? Michael, David, Chepe, are you gonna be around?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be around.
So you, you two guys, if you you two guys, if you missed the, the appointments for the last two or three, you're gonna be let go, okay? In like three weeks, you're gonna be let go.
Yeah.
Because that's unacceptable.
I thought Sam was really good. Was that a promise?
I, 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 sure, I have a question, just want to make sure per chance, you know, these are next two, two, three weeks, even though it's gonna be probably our last few, so it's critical. And also to make sure that attendance will have a quorum. So Sam, when are you gonna be out, since I'm gonna be the acting chair? How, how many, how many are you?
I'll be out for a month.
So you will miss.
I will not be here for a month, I'll miss the first and the fifteenth meetings.
You better get a good tan.
What about Commissioner Klein? How many, how many meetings gonna be out?
I'm going to miss March first, I will be here March fifteenth. And then I don't know when the next meeting is. Sean, do you know the meeting after March fifteen?
Oh, gosh, sorry, my mouse isn't moving. It is April, April fifth.
Yeah, that's a religious holiday, so I won't, I won't be there on the fifth.
Yeah.
Oh wait, let's, let's confirm this.
Which holiday?
Passover.
Maybe, we may be.
It's gonna be canceled anyway.
It's gonna be canceled anyways, I think, so the, the two meetings may be the last ones, unless, unless they want to allow us to do a special meeting. It may be canceled for the religious holiday, it's longstanding council practice to cancel for those holidays typically.
Yeah, I won't make that either.
Well, maybe this is the time to say it's been great fun. And short, short time for Stuart and Chepe, but nice, nice to meet you at least. I, I had the opportunity of meeting with each of them. And David and, and Michael, you know, a long time, I was looking forward to actually looking at you both, but that may not happen until we have meet at Pete's or something.
Yeah, yeah, so, so Sam, this is probably your, your last, you know, DRC meeting. Since you're gonna, you're gonna be out for a month and then they may not be a, a meeting in April. So yeah, let's, let's have a, a informal after the dissolution in April, let's get together or something. We all have each other's email. Yeah, so if I don't see you, you have, you guys have a good break and then hopefully in the next two meetings, we will have a three, at least three or four, commissioner present to be, to have a quorum.
Yes, well, I'll, I'll miss all the excitement, but I'm sure I'll read about it and.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Sam has been a pleasure.
Yes.
All right, take care.
Chair Harding, can you please advise the meeting adjourned?
A good closure.
What did Sean say?
Can you please confirm the meeting's adjourned?
The meeting is adjourned.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.